We're on the air.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular city council meeting of January 22, 2019. Seeing as there's nobody here for the open forum, I ask you all to please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I will approve, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the special city council work session of January 3, 2019, city council meeting of January 8, 2019, and the special city council work session of January 12, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meetings are approv, or the minutes are approved. Tonight, we have two presentations before we begin, and the first one is Black History Month in the City of Richfield Proclamation with the Chair of the Human Rights Commission, Brett Stusa. If you could join me, Brett, up here at the microphone. Thank you very much, and I will read the proclamation of the City of Richfield. Whereas Black History Month is a time to celebrate the achievements of African-Americans who shaped the history of our city, state, and nation, and whereas Black History Month pays tribute to the contributions of African-Americans who have made American history in their struggles of freedom and equality and deepens the understanding of our shared history, and whereas African-American families have lived in what is now known as the City of Richfield since the early 1800s and have contributed to the community, and whereas the achievements of African-Americans in the Richfield school system have been recognized since the late 19th century. For example, in the late 19th century, William E. Patrick, an African-American teacher at East School in Richfield, and in 1967, John L. Pedersen was captain of the Richfield High Track Team and is now the Richfield High School Athletic Hall of Fame. Whereas in 1967, Richfield Churches set an example for us all by banding together and declaring full-page newspaper ads which said, "We wish to make it known that Richfield Churches welcomes citizens of all races, colors, and creeds." And whereas African-Americans have been involved in the Richfield City Government for, since at least the 1960s, when Robert Worthington was hired as the Richfield Planning Director in 1969. And whereas Black or African-American residents represented 10% of Richfield City's population in 2016 and 22% of the pre-K through 12 Richfield Schools enrollment in 2014. And whereas the Richfield City Council and staff identified celebrating diversity and being equitable as core values, recognizing that our diversity and culture is one of our greatest strengths and assets, and whereas the City of Richfield strives to promote the environment of equity and inclusion, and whereas the City of Richfield is in the beginning stages of racial, of an racial equity initiative, participating in the 2018 Racial Equity Cohort led by the Government Alliance on Race and Equity in partnership with the League of Minnesota Cities to begin work on racial equity by learning, building capacity, developing a work plan that fits our organization and community, and laying the groundwork for its implementation. And whereas the Richfield Human Rights Commission supported the proclamation at its January 3, 2019 meeting and recommended to the Richfield City Council that they do the same. And now for, now therefore, I, Maria Regan Gonzalez, Mayor of the City of Richfield, on behalf of the Richfield City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2019 as Black History Month in the City of Richfield and call on the people of Richfield to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, ceremonies, to continue the honor and contributions of Black Americans throughout the year. So I will sign it and pass it over for you to receive. There you go. Thank you very much for the contributions and the work that you guys did on this proclamation, and I understand that Councilmember Garcia is interested in saying a few things as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I happened to Google Black History Month and found a number of things, like C.J. Walker was the first woman to become a millionaire in the Black community, and she made and sold hair products. George Washington Carver, he derived 300 products from peanuts. And John Mercer Langston was the first Black to become a lawyer in 1854. Thurgood Marshall was the first Black to be appointed to the United States Supreme Court. And Shirley Shism, see, I remember some of these folks. Shirley Shism was elected to Congress in 1968, and she ran for president in 1972. And then we have Matt Little, and Matt Little was a Richfield resident, very prominent in the community and very much of an activist and community builder, and he went on to do a number of things. He retired as a mail carrier, and he went, and then he went into the lawn business, and then he became president of the NAACP. And then, of course, we have our own Barack Obama, who was elected in 2009. We're not moving very fast, but we're moving forward. And, you know, so we have this particular, the Black community that has come and gone from slavery and have persevered in spite of all the obstacles and barriers in front of them, and are working to, to make our nation strong, economically strong, strong of skills, strong in terms of love of country and love of neighbor. So yesterday was Martin Luther King Day, and I think most, a lot of us still remember him. So, so it's good that we're celebrating Black History Month.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. All right, well, thank you to the Human Rights Commission for presenting the proclamation to us tonight. The next item is also for Councilmember Garcia to introduce.
Okay, Police Chief Jay Henthorn. You know, Jay, I, what, one of the, I mean, Chief Henthorn, one of the things I really like when you hand out these awards is that you see members of the officers' families. And, you know, that's really important that you support our police officers, because we support them, but it's important that you support them and that you encourage them and take good care of them for us. The other thing that I wanted to say, Chief, is that all of a sudden, you know, it just, I don't know when it happened, but people are very, very, very happy and satisfied with the Police Department. And I think when you see a police officer in a drugstore, you know, they'll smile, they say hello, you know, or how are you today, or something like that. And it's, it's really, talk about a presence in the community that is so beneficial to all of us, because we're proud of our, of our police. I mean, they do a tremendous job, they do a tremendous job in the community, and with all the activities that they sponsor with kids from our schools, with the cadets, you know, with unity in the community, with PMAC, which is, I think, is a very significant assistance in terms of bridging whatever gaps we've had. So I want to commend you and your, and your police force for an outstanding job that you do, because we really appreciate you.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Garcia. We definitely appreciate those comments. And our officers, even though I can only present three tonight with awards, they're all very dedicated, very professional officers that go in the community day in and day out and provide excellent service while they're away from their families. And, you know, as the chief being up here and receiving those comments, it makes me feel good that the public is seeing that, but I think the credit goes to the officers that are out there day in and day out, working the nights, the weekends, the holidays, the birthdays, away from their families, that provide such excellent service to our citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, it is my honor and privilege to be here tonight to present three department awards for outstanding service to our department. The first is Traffic Safety Officer of the Year. Officer Nick Ship received this award, and our rewards are selected based upon certain criteria and also selected by supervisors of our department. Officer Nick Ship is assigned to the DWI car, and just to refresh everyone's memory, our DWI car is a grant-funded position which only eight cities in the state of Minnesota have. We were fortunate to get that grant about five years ago at a cost back then of almost $600,000, and we're continuing with that position today. He had the greatest number of traffic stops for the Police Department in 2018 with a total of 1,572 traffic enforcement contacts. He issued 577 citations and arrested 100 impaired drivers for driving while under the influence. Officer Ship has made a substantial number of felony narcotic arrests and removed many firearms off the streets through his diligent and proactive traffic enforcement duties. Due to his dedication and contributions to traffic safety, Officer Ship was nominated and unanimously selected by superiors as Traffic Safety Officer of the Year. Now Officer Ship, like Elvis, is in the building, but due to his current assignment, he cannot be present tonight, so we will present the award to him at a later date, so. Community-Oriented Policing Officer of the Year, and this is the cornerstone of what we teach our new officers when they come to the department. Our community-oriented policing program is very important to us. It puts us out in the community and interacts with the community on a daily basis as we serve the citizens of Richfield. Officer Miranda Soldo, assigned to investigations currently, completed over 193 hours of community-oriented policing activity, the most of any officer on our department. Officer Soldo serves as an ambassador, volunteer, and leader for the Special Olympics program. She has mentored youth and individuals with special needs and has formed positive relationships with numerous members of our community. Officer Soldo has participated in the International Special Olympics Games in Las Vegas, Nevada. In addition, Officer Soldo was the Hennepin County Regional Coordinator and the Department Coordinator for the Law Enforcement Torch Run, as well as participating in volunteering in the Richfield Explorers Program. Officer Soldo also participated in community-sponsored events such as Unity in the Community, Coffee with a Cop, Night to Unite, and Heroes for Helpers. As a result of her contributions to COP engagement, activities, and exceptional representation of the Police Department, Officer Soldo was selected as a Community-Oriented Policing Officer of the Year. So, Brand, if you would come up. The Officer of the Year, at the end of each year, the Richfield Police Supervisors, the Sergeants select a Officer of the Year candidate. This selection is based on an officer's exemplary performance, dedication, and commitment to the Police Department, and also to the citizens of Richfield. In 2018, Officer Dylan Schultz, who is the recipient of this year's award, conducted 785 traffic safety contacts, which averages out in a 12-hour shift which our officers work, to almost eight stops per shift. He issued 206 citations and made 21 DWI arrests. Officer Schultz has excelled in community-oriented policing, volunteering and participating in over 49 hours of community engagement events. Officer Schultz participated in the Special Olympics Torch Run, the Special Olympics Polar Plunge, the Special Olympics Tippacop, Richfield Police Explorer Ride Alongs, as well as the Citizen Police Academy. During 2018, Officer Schultz became a field training officer, attended a tactical medic instructor school, became a member of the Minnesota Lima Honor Guard, and we have two officers that are assigned to the Law Enforcement Memorial Association Lima Honor Guard, which is a prestigious honor for any police department, and we have now two of our officers on the Lima Honor Guard, and he is also a member of the Richfield SWAT team. As a result of his exceptional performance, dedication, and contributions to the Police Department, the city, and the citizens he served, Officer Schultz was selected as the 2018 Officer of the Year. And that ends my presentation. Thank you very much.
Chief, I just wanted to say a couple of comments. So I've had the opportunity to work directly with Officer Soldo a few times now when residents have come to me and asked me to assist them in contacting the police, and I just want to say every single time she has just done an absolutely outstanding job, whether it has been a resident with a disability, a senior, a non-English speaker, she's just really shown up with such care, empathy, and compassion, and I've seen it not just once, but multiple times. And the same has gone, has been true when I've been, you know, supporting residents and coming to the Police Department, whether it's her or any other officer, it's been the same type of treatment to community, and the efforts that our police has in building those relationships with community is huge. And I just want to say particularly to Officer Soldo, who I've interfaced with multiple times now, but to the whole department, you know, we really do notice that, and it makes a huge difference, and we appreciate that commitment and that connection with community. And as Councilmember Garcia said, thank you to the families, because every time they come and they're in the community of Richfield, folks are risking their lives and their safety to make, ensure the safety and the lives of our residents, and that really means a lot, and we don't take it lightly. So, thank you to the families, and thank you to the officers.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just say something briefly. Chief Henthorn, I just want to thank you, and I just want to, I want to acknowledge all the officers that are in the room and all the officers that are in the back there. And we're glad every time we have an opportunity to recognize our police officers, and I'm sure they would be the first to say it too, that we'd love to praise you guys every time you do something great, and we only get to do it every so often. So, on behalf of the council, we want to say thank you, not just to you guys, but to everybody here and everybody who's not here. We appreciate you guys, you are indispensable, and you make our community better every day. And I'm sorry, we don't get to thank you every, every week, but we're glad we get to today.
Thank you.
I would also like to add my thanks. We do really appreciate you, and I get to see your officers come into the schools and interact with the kids, and that's always good to set up that positive relationship. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. The next item is hats off to hometown hits, and I will start with Councilmember Supple.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to throw a reminder out there that the Arts Commission is looking for poets. We're having a contest to, so that they can put poems into the sidewalks on East 66th Street from Portland to Cedar, and it's a continuation of the program that was started on Portland Avenue, and there's a category for people 17 and under and a category for 18-plus, and the theme is families flourishing. So I know just down the block from my house, there's a great poem that a kid put in there that was like, I think, a sixth grader at the time, and it's fabulous. So please put your poetry out there. I also got the opportunity last week to see the Woodlake Nature Center naturalists in action with students, and I want to say kudos to them, they did a fabulous job with our Richfield students, and they're there every day, working hard, kind of quietly behind the scenes. And finally, we do have an election coming up on February 12, and if you want to vote absentee, you can vote here at the Municipal Center, Monday through Friday, from 8 to 4:30. So those are the three things I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one, one announcement today, and it's the, but it's the program, we have a in-service day, is it in-service day for the kids coming up on the 28th? And there's a program that our Parks and Rec Department does for children that are just old enough to be staying home alone, where they go through a lot of training, safety training, CPR training. So if you're wondering what to do with your kids on that extra day, there's that opportunity, but if they're just getting old enough, and I know my oldest is right at that age, it's an opportunity for them to be trained. And it's just one example of one of the resources that, of which there are countless, that Richfield provides for kids and for young families here in the community. Now, how you sign up for this, this is, this can be a little tricky on our website. If you go to our website, you have to go to Departments, and from Departments, you have to go to our Parks and Recreation link, and on that Parks and Recreation link, there's a link that says to register for upcoming events. And if you push on that, you get into that system, and I would just encourage you, this is four clicks, I know this can be hard for, for folks, but if you push through those four clicks, you're in a system where you can register repeatedly for those events that come up, and I would just encourage folks, once you get into the rhythm of taking advantage of that, it's like our community becomes alive and three-dimensional for you. So if you're newer to the community and you're wondering, how do I get involved, this is a great way to do that, it's a great way to provide for your kids as they learn to provide for themselves, and I hope families can take advantage of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. First reminder that Farmer's Market is on the 25th of this month, 3:00 p.m., and then on February the 15th, the City Council is meeting with our state legislators, and that's, will happen at 7:30 in the morning to 9:15, and that's open to the public and it's opportunity for, for you to hear what the legislators' plans are, and then you'll hear some of what the city would like our legislators to help us with. And then you'll get to meet them and get their phone number and call them on whatever issue you need to. And then on February the 19th, it's a naturalization ceremony, and that will be at 10:00 a.m. at Holy Angels Academy. Okay, then, and I have to do this, folks, you know, I hate to, but I've got to do it every, I was told to do it every single time we met. The Richfield Banshell is selling bricks with your name on there and whatever you want to, you know, if you want to put that you've served on the HRA, or that, you know, whatever you want to put down to celebrate your place in our community, you can do that. The bricks are $150, and some, some folks will have two bricks, like our mayor, Marty Kirsch, he has served first on the City Council, and then later he went on to serve for a long time as mayor of Richfield. So he's bought two bricks, which is great, because that's exactly what he's done in his service to our community, he's helped to build the city. And all of these people that help us buy a brick, help us build our community, and you can also buy a brick for, in memoriam, or someone that you love has passed away. And then I wanted to mention Mayor Reagan, Maria Reagan Gonzalez, last week was interviewed at WCCOTV, and I don't know if you saw her or not, but I think that's still available, right?
Yeah.
The web, yeah, the site. And, and then last, and then I think it was last week too, right? She was interviewed on NPR. So, I mean, that really makes us proud. And the other thing that makes us proud too, I think, is the fact that when she gets on the air, or when she gets, you know, to talk about, she always brings up her community, and she always brings up, you know, the staff and the other council members, and what a great community we have, because the constituents make it great. The constituents are always the best partners that we could ever have. So, and, and then she also went on last week to be Master of Ceremonies at Attorney General Keith Ellison's get-together that he had, and I'm sure that you really enjoyed that, because, you know, we see, we see a lot of our friends in these ceremonies, and so hats off to you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good job. Then I wanted to mention our city manager, Rodriguez. You know, when we meet, like, when we met for the HRA commissioners, it was like a whole afternoon, and when we met for the commission interviews, it was a whole day, including past lunchtime. Anyway, so what I want to say is that I can't believe how many compliments I've gotten about what a great, what a great feeling to have the city manager present, that they feel like, hey, you know, hey, you know, she's really looking at us, and she, I think, and I'm just maybe speaking, speaking for you, and maybe you can address this when you speak, but the fact is, is that, you know, I really think that our city manager found a niche because she's really impressed with our residents. I mean, she, she says, geez, I can't believe it, they're all smart, they all, they all want to serve, the people that want to serve. We had more folks apply than we had slots to put them in, and it's, it's good, because we have shown you, you know, our people, and, and we appreciate too that, that you have an interest in connecting, I know that you're working and connecting with staff and with, with the council and with other players in your job, but I think it's really important to reach out to the community so that they can get a sense of belonging, and you have made that happen, so I want to thank you for that. Okay, I'm done.
Mayor, if we're, if we're talking, if we're doing in-house, hats off, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention a decision that you and Chair Preston Supple made with the HRA, and thanks to our city manager for bringing this to our attention, but because of the federal shutdown, we have potentially some upcoming shortfalls with Section 8 housing, and through no fault of their own, both our most vulnerable citizens and, and our whole local economy and is, could be affected by this. So hats off to our HRA and for your presence on that in advocating for our citizens and for our community, and just making sure that we lean in as a city to make sure that we're, we all weather the storm. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, I have a little longer list than usual. So I will start off with saying I was honored to be able to attend the funeral of our former mayor, Lauren Law, last week, and our mayor, Marty Kirsch, was also there in attendance, as well as other leaders from the Richfield community. But it was extremely touching to just see the amount of support and how he really shaped Richfield during an important time when he was mayor in the 70s, and I was even paging through, he has a book, and in talking to his family, so it really meant a lot for So it, it really meant a lot for me to be able to attend. I, um, connected with the family there, and I know it meant a lot, um, to them that I was able to attend. I wasn't able to stay for the whole time, but, uh, his son had emailed me a few months ago and said that he would like, his father would like to attend, um, the Richfield City Council meeting in February on his birthday, and unfortunately, he passed away six weeks before his a hundred and second birthday.
Wow.
So it was just something that I felt very grateful to be able to attend, and I want to give my hats off to, to our former mayor and his family. Um, a couple things that I was able to be a part of this week and last week, and I just want to let people know, is we have a really fun podcast called That's Rich, so if you just, That's Rich, Richfield. Um, if you just go to our website, or if you search That's Richfield Podcast, you'll see it come up, and it's really cool. It's one-hour sessions. Um, I just taped mine last week with, with Neil. We have our former mayor, Pat Elliott, who also did one. We have some staff that have, um, already recorded some sessions, and we've been talking about our public works and projects going on. We've also had a discussion on organics collection as well. So it's just a different way to get more information about the city. It's a little more intimate, we get to dive into different types of topics. So, uh, please go to the website and check out our podcast and share with, with other folks, it's a great asset. Um, last Saturday, we had our League of Women Voters Forum, a candidate, uh, forum for the Ward Three seat, and as Councilmember Supple said, that election is on February twelfth. So if you live in Ward Three, which is everybody east of Portland Avenue, we have a special election, and it's very important that we all come out in this cold February day or before and get out and vote. And you can go onto YouTube and search, you know, Richfield League of Women Voters Forum, and you will see the, the videotape if you were unable to attend. And let's see here, two more things. We have Coffee with a Cup coming up next week, January thirty-first, from ten A M. to twelve P M. at Local Roots, and the location of Local Roots is eight-one-seven East Sixty-Six Street. So that was one of the things that we mentioned, that our police really does such a great job in, and that's showing up in community and connecting with residents. Another great opportunity to just sit town, sit down and meet our officers, ask questions, connect with your neighbors as well. So that's Coffee with a Cup, January thirty-first, from ten A M. to twelve P M. at Local Roots. And lastly, um, I do want to just let people know, we will be having our State of the Community. So typically, we have the State of the City, but this year, we'll focus it on the State of the Community, and it will be on February twentieth, which is a Wednesday, from five-thirty to seven at night in the auditorium of the middle school. And this year, we're really excited to, um, hear not only from the mayor and our city, but also from our community partners about what the future looks like for Richfield. So that's a save the date, we'll be having more information coming out, but I did want to let people know. Yes, the event of this, uh, the date of the State of the Community for Richfield is February twentieth from five-thirty to seven P M. at our middle school auditorium. And there'll be more information coming out on that shortly. All right, uh, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. Item number five is the Consent Calendar, and we will hand it over to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. The Consent Calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the Consent Calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further action on these items is necessary. Item A, consideration of the adoption of a resolution to supporting hazard mitigation planning efforts and adopting the Hennepin County All Hazard Mitigation Plan. Item B, consideration of the approval of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Blessed Trinity Catholic School for their twenty-nineteen snowball dance on February ninth. Uh, consider, I'm sorry, item C, consideration of the approval of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Church of Saint Peter for their ham bingo event taking place on March thirtieth. Item D, consideration of the approval of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Church of Saint Peter for their spaghetti dinner taking place on February tenth. Item E, consideration of the approval of the continuation of an agreement with the City of Bloomington for the provision of public health services for the City of Richfield for twenty nineteen. Item F, consideration of the approval of a declaration of covenant related to the use of city property by C B Two Development L L C. for the construction of a public pocket park at approximately Sixty-third Street East and Richfield Parkway. Item G, consideration of the approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending Section three hundred of the Richfield City Code to formally establish the offices of City Treasurer and City Clerk. And item H was added today, I just want to note that. Um, and it was added because of, it's a time-sensitive item. Uh, item H is consideration of the adoption of a resolution supporting a grant application to the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development for the Cedar Point Two Housing Redevelopment Project. So I submit all of those items on the Consent Calendar for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion or questions? I just want to know what ham bingo is, I'm very interested, maybe I'll go and check it out.
Sounds like fun.
All right, hearing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The Consent Calendar has been approved. Thank you. The next item goes to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is the consideration of the adoption of a resolution accepting grants and donations received by Richfield Recreation Services Department in two thousand and eighteen, and authorizing the Recreation and Services Department to administer the funds in accordance with any applicable, uh, grant agreement and terms prescribed by, uh, the donors. And I just want to say a word of thanks to our, um, to our, uh, Rich, our Richfield Recreation Services Department, um, not just for, for doing so much with the resources that they have, but for really stepping up and going after those extra dollars that make, uh, things like, uh, like opportunities to make our kids safer on, uh, in-service days. Uh, so, so thank you, uh, thank you very much. And I would, um, uh, make a motion to adopt a resolution, uh, accepting grants and donations received by the Richfield Recreation Services Department in two thousand and eighteen, and authorizing the Recreation Services Department to administer the funds in accordance with any applicable grant agreements and terms prescribed by donors.
I'll second.
Any council comments or any additional comments from staff?
With the staff and the work they did for two thousand and eighteen, and we're going to make it even better in two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would just like to say thank you also to the donors. It looks like a lot of people were very generous to us.
Thank you for, to the donors, and, I mean, it's very impressive to see the additional funds, um, coming in to our department, and this translates into real accessible programming for our families. That's something that I hear over and over again from residents, and we heard it during our board and commission interviews. People are just absolutely impressed by the amount of program and services that the City of Richfield offers through, to our families, through the Park and Recreation Services. It really is, um, foundational in kind of what makes Richfield who we are, and makes us feel connected, gives us the opportunities to have free, accessible events for our kids, and really, um, not have to leave Richfield for everything, but be able to do those things as a family in our own community any day, almost any day of the week. So, thank you very much.
Uh, Mayor, just a, a little teaching moment here. Um, you don't know what a ham bingo is.
I do not.
They, they play for hams.
Oh.
Absolutely.
That's what I figured, but I didn't, I did not know.
Well, you know, you know how much of a Minnesota traveler I am, when I, when I go with my friend to her cabin, sometimes we wind up going to, uh, to organizations, and they have their meat bingos. So they have different types of meat, and if you win, then you say, which piece of meat do you want to, you know, whether it's two steaks, or a roast, or, um, or ground beef, or pork chops, whatever. So, you know, I, I think that's not a bad idea.
Yeah, that's nice. I've been a part of, um, the meat raffles in my community growing up, but, um, I've never done bingo. You have to work a little harder at bingo.
Yeah.
Mayor, I would just, I would just add just one particular note. Um, I noticed several of the, um, of the grants are for our Richfield Farmer's Market, and something that I think is happening with ever more increasing, with ever more, uh, increasing frequency, is that Richfield's becoming a destination for surrounding communities, and these, these little, these little grants add up to not just a great program, but a program that brings people from the surrounding communities to Richfield, uh, where they do other things in Richfield too. So you're making an impact not just for us, which we appreciate, but you're making us something special, uh, and available to the broader community, so thanks for that as well.
Thank you.
We have a motion?
Yep, and it was seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The resolution has been adopted. Thank you. The next item is consideration of appointments to the City Advisory Commissions. Terms of several City Advisory Commission members expire on January thirty-first, twenty nineteen. In addition, due to resignations, there are midterm vacancies that should be filled. Terms of advisory commissions are for three years. The City Council directs the City Manager's Office to conduct an annual recruitment, seeking applicants to fill the vacancies. This recruitment includes a process, or a press release, and information on the city's website and social media platforms. Applicants were interviewed at a work session held on January twelfth, twenty nineteen. To ensure a quorum at future advisory commission meetings, the City Council should make advisory commission appointments at the January twenty-second, twenty nineteen City Council meeting. So now I will read the appointments we had, I believe we had over twenty of them. So, for the Advisory Board of Health, with all appointments ending on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, we have filled them with Christine Claus, Rebecca Case, and Debbie Eng. For the Arts Commission, with the same term expiration date of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, we have appointed Chelsea Knopf and Jeff Wright. To the Civil Service Commission, also ending on the same date, we have Jeffrey Bruzek. And for Community Services Commission, we have one appointment ending on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and the rest of them ending on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The one expiring in twenty twenty-one will be filled with Joseph Miller, and the last three will be filled with Lisa Rudolph, Dan Smija, and Kevin Wendt. The Friendship City Commission vacancies, also expiring on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, will be filled with Logan Thien and Dan DeVilliers. The Human Rights midterm vacancy that will expire on January thirty-first, twenty twenty will go to Adam Alleheimer. There is a second midterm vacancy that will expire on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, which will be filled by Todd Deed. And the remaining vacancies that will expire on January thirty, thirty-first, twenty twenty-two will be filled with Kathleen Goodmote, Tasha O, uh, Othendorf, Chris Anderson, and Michelle Thompson. The two open seats for the Planning Commission will be filled by Susan Rosenberg and Peter Lavin, also expiring on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And the Transportation Commission seats, uh, there is one that is a midterm vacancy that expires on January thirty-first, twenty twenty, which will be filled by Dan Edgerton. And the rest of the remaining three vacancies with expiration date of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two will be filled by Kevin Severson, Husnia Bradley, and Marco Lance. There are still, um, a couple youth commission vacancies that we will address at a later time. But before we, I have a question for staff. Is there a motion to appoint the list that I just read?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and I did want to ask our city manager, Rodriguez. Um, so I know since I've been on council since twenty-six, or I guess it would be the beginning of twenty seventeen, we, and maybe even before that, and maybe Councilmember Garcia, you can fill us in, but the past couple years, we have had many more applicants than open positions, and in the past, uh, we really, it was the opposite. We had, we weren't necessarily able to fill all of the openings and vacancies with applicants. So it's just a great testament to the passion and interest that folks have in wanting to get involved. And something we had, um, you know, something that came up that I'd be interested in considering is kind of what does it look like right now in terms of the year that, and appointments in terms that folks can, can be on our boards and commissions, and what are some options that we might be able to consider to just make sure that we're able to kind of refresh our board and commissions, since there is such great interest?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, and also thank you for your kind words, uh, Councilmember Garcia. Um, it was a, it was a pleasure to sit in, it was, um, fun to meet the citizens, and they were so engaged and experienced, and, you know, my only regret is that we didn't have enough spots to slot them all in. Um, and you are correct, um, thanks to some great research from Jared. In twenty sixteen, there were thirty-six applicants, eighteen vacancies. In twenty seventeen, there were fifty-two applicants and twenty-nine vacancies. And just this recent, um, recruitment, thirty-six applicants, and there ended up being twenty-three openings because of some shifting. Um, so there are, you have some choices, um, to consider. Um, you're trying to, of course, balance retaining these experienced and engaged citizens, but also making room for new citizens that, um, are interested. So, again, thanks to Jared for pulling this research, but in nineteen ninety-three, there was a resolution that was passed that would have, in that second-term appointment, the preference would have gone to the incumbent over new candidates. But in the third term, if they were applying for their third term, if there were more applicants than there were vacancies, then the preference would go to the new candidate as opposed to the incumbent. So that's something if you wanted to consider, you could reinstitute that policy.
And can you just, um, share what it is, what, how the practice now?
So the, the prac, in the city ordinance right now, it is just the limit to three consecutive terms, and also that's no, you cannot serve on more than one commission at a time. So that's in the ordinance. The, the preference, um, to incumbent is, is a practice, that's not in the ordinance currently. But another option is that you could change the ordinance so that you're only, the term limit is only two-term. So that could be another option for you. And, um, also this, this nineteen ninety-three resolution, that was, um, that was, uh, pulled, uh, repealed in two, twenty fifteen, when we did a cleanup of the ordinance.
Thank you. So if, if we're interested in discussing this more, um, as a city council and looking at the different options, so updating the ordinance and having, um, right now, like you said, it says three terms maximum, but making a clarification of two terms preference, and then depending for the third term, um, if there are new folks or not, how would we go about considering these changes?
So the, if you were going to limit it to two, you would have to change the ordinance. Um, but you could reinstitute this nineteen ninety-three policy, um, by resolution. I can talk to Mary Techen about the best way to do it. Um, I don't know if you want to, uh, incorporate it into the ordinance, or just pass it as a policy.
What do council members think about just looking at that?
I would support the policy. It seems like, it seems like a policy that makes sense. If we needed to have a work ser- session about it, we could, but I don't know that I need more information to say, I think it, it makes sense. The policy seems well, well-crafted and timely for where we're at now, that people could serve, but there wouldn't be, the, the preference would be if there was an opportunity to give somebody else that opportunity, there wouldn't be deference to that person in that third term. So I think, I think that makes sense, and I would, I would even entertain reinstituting that policy. I would move, if, if the council members, colleagues felt it was appropriate, I'd, I'd, I'd be comfortable moving that we reinstate that policy, and if we need to change the ordinance, we could at a future date. But I'd want to hear what my colleagues had to say.
Well, in the first place, it's up to the council, who Well, in the first place, it's up to the council who they appoint. So commissioners serve at the pleasure of the council. And it sounds good to, to just limit to two terms, but at the same time, I think nine years is not bad because you wind up getting someone that is very good and really learns the process and learns the ordinances and learns how to do, you know, that particular job. It's kind of like the HRA, you know, the HRA has a five-year term limit, but it makes sense because you need that institutional knowledge and stability. So I would prefer to live, leave it as is. And if we want to choose to, if we have a lot of people that want to be appointed, we don't have to, to select someone for three terms. At that point, we can, we have the option of, we, we don't guarantee the three years. We can just, they, they could leave it at two terms or three terms. It's up to our discretion without having to put it in an ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I would be uncomfortable just voting on the spur of the moment. I think we need time to mull it over, but I do think that it's good to have at least two terms. And I tend to agree with Councilmember Garcia that giving the council some discretion on whether or not they put that third term in would be good.
You know, I'm fine with looking at it at a later date. I would say, from my perspective, it's one of my favorite things to do as a council member and now as mayor of the year. I mean, just getting so many residents coming in, getting to meet them in a more intimate way. We have such an amazing caliber and diversity of folks in Richfield with so many skills and backgrounds. It's really such an honor. I mean, like last weekend, it was eight hours, or a couple of weekends ago, we spent eight hours. And then last year, we spent two eight-hour days on a Saturday and Sunday interviewing folks. And it's, it's really very fun to do that. One thing that I would suggest, when we do look at this at a later date, I just would like it to be clearly written out. We don't necessarily have to overhaul or change the ordinance, but I do want to be consistent and make sure residents know if we are going with one way or another. And we could say something, you know, we'll have to look at what our different options are. But if there are going to be some type of changes made, and, and even just for transparency's sake, I'd like to be clear in policy at least of saying, you know, up to two terms, for a second term an incumbent, you know, can, will get reappointed if they have a good review. And then it is up to the city council's discretion for that third term, whether it's appoint, reappointment or new. I would just like it to be clear for residents.
Before we vote, I'd like to make one other comment.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say I was really, really, being the first time doing this, I was very impressed with all the applicants. We have an amazing wealth of talent out there. And it was so amazing to see people that were committed and fired up to get involved. And all of the great ideas that people were coming up with. It was, it was just a very uplifting day. So thank you to everybody who applied.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I, I'd like to echo that and just, and just for the folks that applied, and there were so many qualified, talented people that we weren't able to place. And it's exceedingly important to me that they know it was not because they weren't tal, talented, not qualified. And a number of circumstances, we were looking at mixes of talent. And so it doesn't even mean that you were more or less talented than people that we appointed, but it was maybe the right group of people and the particular skill set we were looking for, for that commission. So it's not even, it's not even qualitative, but it's a, so, an embarrassment of riches and really grateful for the, the commissioners that we're going to have. But, and I, I don't know if anybody's mentioned this. Last year, Jared was able to put together a list of local Richfield nonprofit organizations that, that are earnest for, for volunteers and leadership and executive leadership. And I know I was the liaison to the Fowl Board, the Friends of Woodlake Nature, Nature Center. And we needed several board members and we were able to place several board members from this pool of folks who weren't placed on commissions. So I was just wondering if we could do that again this year.
Is that something, Jared, that you'd be able to attach in the email follow-up? Thank you. And then I just wanted to add on to what Councilmember Troutman said. So part of what we were looking at was the mix of, in the composition of the existing commissions, but then we also took into account, some people only had one preference, other people had ranked multiple preferences. And so we really also had to look at all of the different preferences that applicants had. What were their number ones, twos, and threes? We really got to the level of one and two because there were, you know, so many people ranking. And one of the hardest ones was the Planning Commission. Almost every single person ranked that one as one of their top commissions. So not only did we look at mix, but we also looked at the preferences and rankings that application, or applicants had. So it's something that we all enjoy doing every year. And we always encourage folks to reapply. And if they didn't get selected this year, as Councilmember Troutman said, Jared will be sending out a list of other organizations. And we want to have an engaged, our engaged resident base. It's very important. And there's so many ways to get involved. Okay, seeing as there is no more discussion on this item, all in favor?
What about what?
Oh, I haven't finished this one yet.
Voting on this one?
Yep. So now we're voting on this one still though. So all in favor?
Aye.
The resolution has been passed and the appointments have been made for the city boards and commissions.
Mayor, I will move Claims and Payroll.
Councilmember Garcia is really, really excited about Claims and Payroll. And we still have the city manager's report before.
Oh, that's right.
Claims and Payroll.
You know, you know what I was, you know, I had this conversation, Mayor, with Councilmember Supple. And she kind of hinted that she wouldn't mind doing Claims and Payroll. And I told her, I says, well, you know, maybe after you've been on for two years and have experience under, under your belt, can you do Claims and Payroll? But right now, it cannot go to a rookie.
I'll defer to your expertise.
Someone is very concerned about Claims and Payroll.
No shutdown in Richfield.
No. We will still maintain.
Well, my program starts pretty soon.
So before Claims and Payroll, is there anything with the city manager's report?
Nothing to report.
Lucky for Councilmember Garcia. Okay, now we can go to Claims and Payroll.
I will move Claims and Payroll, again.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Claims and Payroll has been passed. And with that, we will adjourn this, the city council meeting for tonight.
Good.
Thank you.